It's eight fifteen, I'll call the board of supervisors into session. We'll be starting with an eight fifteen work session with their county engineer and assistant county engineer. Russ.
Morning.
Glenn.
Good morning.
So just gonna run through this quickly and a few updates from a couple of weeks ago. So Old Farley Road, River City finished up the asphalt paving last week. So that's good news. So now it's just a little bit of shoulder and some transition driveways. And they're scheduling to have the paint lines this week as well, but that all depend on weather, of course. Old Massey Road chick fry shows showed up last week, started or finishing some culverts. And they have two crews on site, one doing culverts and one doing the build out and the rip rap shoulders for erosion. So hopefully within a week, we'll get some asphalt and do some asphalt overlay within a week or two on Old Massey. Sundown update, Stager still on site. They're working within the regrade section and that's going to be from Humky South about half a mile. Cutting into that and getting that ready, rocked up and ready for the new asphalt. North Bankston and Hickory Valley Bridge replacements. Again, they're gonna start sometime this month, but nothing set in stone. And once they start on one, then they'll go to the other. So those will coincide. Goose Hill Road, again, still starting in about August. Thunder Road. Taylor has mobilized late last week, it was Friday, to do some clearing and grubbing. And then this week, they're gonna start on the box culvert. There's two box culverts, so they'll be in there for a couple of weeks. Hovicorn, Top Grade was in there last week to replace some intersections. And they, once they wrapped up that, they opened up the road and they're gonna pull off for a couple of weeks. And then they'll have a subcontractor and to do more culvert work about third week in July is what they're anticipating. James and Flanagan. According to our, after our pre-construction meeting, that one will start in August. Hopefully sometime sooner. And then also our 2022 miscellaneous culvert replacement, same contractor. We'll try to squeeze those in between James and Flanagan and his other private work. Then on the next page, just a quick update from the John Deere Northwest Arterio Build Grant. Pierce Tobin has, for the John Deere Road, Pierce Tobin has placed the temporary roadway between South John Deere and Peru. So the detour traffic is in place and they're gonna start continuing on the fill with for that south roundabout, this next phase. And then the northwest, Northwest Arterio, Pierce Tobin has the West Pennsylvania intersection finished for the northbound traffic to be shifted over to the southbound lane on at the Pennsylvania intersections. Pierce Tobin will work on the East Pennsylvania intersection and adjacent mainline paving. This work is anticipated to be done on the sixteenth of this month. Pierce Tobin will then move to the Asbury intersection. So heads up there. Any questions?
Questions?
I don't have any questions.
Nor do I.
I have a couple for you, Russ.
Yeah.
Conrad Lane Bridge, when is that gonna start?
Um, we have not had the pre-construction meeting for that one, so I don't, I don't know.
Later this summer.
It could be later this, this fall or.
We did set that up for a late start date of April, 2023. So they could wait all the way up until that point. Small structure, I wouldn't be surprised if they try to hit that right before winter and then try to knock it out. But you know, nothing, nothing has been scheduled yet at this, at this point.
Okay, and then Thunder Hills Road is, is that in the five-year plan? What, where is that said?
Actually, Thunder Hills Road, we're looking to do some paving on it this year with cooperation with the city Piasta. So we're gonna do that with our maintenance crew. So we just kinda got the go ahead from the city to help fund their portion. And so we're gonna do, do an asphalt overlay on that with, with our own crew.
Thank you, Anthony.
Sure.
Thank you, Russ. Our next work session doesn't start till eight thirty.
Should recess until eight thirty.
I will second that.
Motion to second to recess till eight thirty, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. You're in recess till eight thirty. Call the board of supervisors back in the session for our eight thirty work session. Be with the roads department again and the sheriff attorney's office, I believe. Regarding special use permits.
Morning CJ.
Morning CJ. Morning Jill. Morning Russ.
Like to start, Joe.
Um, sure. So with the changing of the, the state law regarding UTVs, we kinda run into a little bit of a issue. In our UTV ATV law or ordinance, it said that there was a provision for special use and getting permits for special events. And our, our ordinance said that that was a, the number, the magic number for getting a permit was twenty-four vehicles. Now that our ordinance is basically gone, what, by the wayside because of the change in the state law. We have to revert back to the regular special use permit or the special event permit, which says a hundred vehicles. And so I guess we were looking for some guidance from the board. And on what they, and the word, some of the wording, and I'll let CJ talk about that since that's more his area. But some of the wording in the, in the special use permit language is a little vague. And I guess we were wondering what the board's thoughts were on number one, the number of vehicles required for a special use permit. Cause apparently somebody reached out and said, well, you know, we're not really sure if we're gonna have a hundred or not, so we don't know. And it's like, I don't, we don't wanna get into this game of, you know, you had ninety-nine, so you don't need one, but you had a hundred and one. You did, you needed one and you didn't get it. So. But anyway, I guess CJ, if you wanna talk about some of the language concerns in there that we need to.
I think it popped up, actually, I think, or somebody actually contacted your office, isn't there an ATV?
Yeah, we have.
For the cause of the kids or something and.
Two, two permits that are kind of in motion, kinda.
Yeah, so. So my, my memory of when we went through all the ATV stuff, there was a, you know, we said, well, a hundred would be probably too many. And the special events thing should be over, overridden by the ATV ordinance. And I think it was more than twenty-four, twenty-four or more. And so like Joe says, I, that's, that sunset, so that's gone. So I guess the question now becomes is, you know, do we, do we need to look at, you know, ordinance in chapter sixty-three? You know, the, and take a look at that specifically, you know? One of the things that gives me a little bit of concern is, you know, it says special events typically require a user of the roadway to pre-register for the event. Events of less than one hundred participants are typically exempt. Meh, you know, that puts a lot of burden on somebody. I mean, I know the application has made the secondary roads and then ultimately the sheriff signs off on that also. You've been through this Harley several times in your past, so you can know how that works. So it would seem that there's probably a good, it's a good opportunity to look at this and maybe for you folks to decide what kinda definitive, either numbers or if it's, you know, if it's more than fifty, it's more than fifty, rather than kind of the typically more than, you know, is exempt. Cause to me, that puts the burden back on the applicant to kinda decide whether they need it or they don't need it. And, and you know, I could well see somebody not getting it and then having this whole big, you know, turnout and then saying, well, we didn't expect that. We didn't know how many to expect, so we did, at the time, we didn't think we needed it based on, on the language. And, and really the bottom line is it's for, it's safety, right? It's for flow of traffic and things of that nature that the sheriff is involved with in secondary roads. So if you're gonna look at it from that standpoint, it would seem to me that it would, it would, it probably, my opinion, needs to be a little more definitive than what we have it.
I just, and looking at it, you know, I know we haven't had a lot of complaints about, you know, ATVs on the road. But if somebody gets behind, somebody gets behind a hundred of them and can't pass them and they can only go thirty-five miles an hour, they're gonna be pissed.
There are still a lot of complaints about ATVs.
Okay, they just must be coming to you guys.
They are, I'm sure, yeah, so not everybody's a fan.
Yeah.
I would.
Noise mostly.
Yeah, I would definitely be in favor of twenty-five or more having the permit. And it's not that you're trying to jam them up with the permit, but that way everybody knows there's gonna be something going on.
Right.
You have the opportunity to get it out in the paper that this ride is going to be taking place and people can avoid that area. You know, I think that's a huge safety issue in and of itself.
Well, and I think the fact that when the permits come in, I mean, they're signed by the board of supervisors in public meeting. And so if someone says, you know, wants to complain, well, I guess they could have watched the public meeting and found out what the route was that these people were gonna take, where, you know, where the areas to avoid or whatever would be. And so they really have no way to blame it, it themselves, so.
Are you, are you thinking supervisor, pot off that the twenty-five would just be applied to ATV, UTVs and others? I mean, I know the one thing that suddenly popped up, typically air bicycle events, right? Where there's a whole bunch.
We really don't, well, I guess we don't cover the ATVs anymore either, but they never, the state has always had the bicycle. For the ATVs, I mean, it's a bigger vehicle.
Sure, takes up more of the road.
Obviously going to impact, you know, travel. Of course, that many bicycles good too.
Well, then, you know, we get large motorcycle rides, large car cruises. I mean, I personally, I think that if, if we're gonna do it, we, we can't just carve out this one group of people. I think we need to make it a blanket statement. And you know, if, if you have fifty cars on this cruise, you need to get a permit. If you have fifty motorcycles on this cruise, you gotta get a permit. That way, nobody can really complain that they're being targeted or unfairly treated. Because if everybody's under the same guidelines, I mean, I, I think to me that, that would be the way to do it. But it's, you know, you guys have to vote on the ordinance, it's whatever you guys think is fair.
Yes, what do you think for a number? You're saying fifty or?
I mean, to me, I, I mean, I, I think fifty would, would be for me. When I think about like these motorcycle rides and things like that, I mean, that you get a pretty good chunk of bikes. And I mean, yeah, they're able, able to keep up with the flow of traffic and everything else, which is a little different than like bicycles and, and UTVs. But, or even like, you know, if you have a group of, you know, a car group, car club or whatever going out, you know? I don't know if they still do, I know they, Cat FM back in the day used to do the car cruise, Saturday's, whatever. I mean, I don't think that they need to go get a, I, you know, I don't, not trying to hold them up from doing their thing every weekend if they still do that. But you know, I just think it's, I think trying to be reasonable. To me, although I agree with CJ, twenty-five is, is a good low number. To me, I think, I would say fifty would be, or I would cap it just to kinda cover some of those smaller things. But like you said, it's, guys think so.
Um, I have a, the number I don't know, but I have a bunch of other little things here. So how does the language substantially interrupt and safe and orderly, you know, those, what we want? So is that, and then, you know, my bigger question was from your experience, when does, you know, when does it interrupt? When does it become less safe? And. Then the, the other, the language that's on top, like you said, sometimes or whatever the.
Yeah.
The word was, what was it?
Typically.
Typically, typically, and that also stuck out to me, I would probably eliminate that.
Yeah.
Um, the other.
If I can just respond to your one question, I don't know, Harley will disagree, you know, obviously he's got similar experience to what I've got on this. But it doesn't, to me, I don't know that the number makes it unsafe. It's the actions of the people involved. And so you can't really say that, you know, if we have twenty-five, it's safe. If we have fifty, it's unsafe, you know what I mean? It's, it all has to do with the actions of the people that are involved in it, more so than what the numbers are. So, sorry to interrupt, sorry to interrupt, but that was.
Yeah. But my other ones is like, why is it a fifty dollar fee for the permit? The insurance at one million, what does that really do? Why on the form is it important to know if they're nonprofit or not? And then I love the little box that says permit fee waived. Check that one. So maybe just on the application part two is, we could maybe clean up that as well. I suppose are just.
My understanding was if it's a nonprofit, that's where the, what fee waived comes in if it's a.
And so if that's, maybe that could be in a part of our ordinance, if that's what we choose to do. Otherwise, that, that makes sense, but is that really important? Fair, is it? I mean, I just don't know the nonprofit status, you know?
Yeah, honestly.
Causes that are.
Right. No, I, I get what you're saying. The, honestly, to me, I'm concerned about the safety part, you know, how it gets paid for, I really don't give a crap.
Yeah.
The, the fee, I don't know that, there was probably a lot of fees collected over the years, most of it is waived.
The ordinance does have sixty-three dash twelve point five. Fees for special events permits may be waived for nonprofit organizations at the discretion of the department head of the departments involved. So it does, it does address that.
Air Department, Road Department, then, okay.
Yes, my comment at high level would be that we know the new law encourages and/or requires, depending upon your reading, that we work with the clubs. Has anyone addressed this issue with the clubs? Because no matter what we do in the room today, this discussion will involve them. Ultimately, the number of whoever has to, when a permit has to be applied for is determined by the board. But I'm not willing to do that without having input from the folks we're supposed to work with. So we are gonna need to, you know, the neat club and the alliance, I think, are the two clubs that we see most frequently.
Joe, may I, real quick?
Pardon me?
The, you're talking about an ordinance level change, which will require public hearings, it will require an amendment to the ordinance. So there would be a component of the public being notified of the public hearings and then additionally having time to speak as well. So.
The law says.
We can just put in.
The law, I believe, Kevin, says that to close roads, we have to work with the clubs. To create an ordinance of any kind, you need to work with clubs. So I think that we should be working with the clubs as we decide.
This is in specific to ATV, UTV, this is.
Right.
Or special use permit for bicycles, motorcycles, cars, everything.
And that's kind of a problem because you.
Right, but the reason we're doing this is because of the ATV change. That's the reason that we're doing this. So I think this should be part of the conversation.
I guess, and, and I totally, I respect your position on that, but I guess where do we stop then? Because we're talking about redoing these rules for, for every person that uses the roads. You know, we also then need to reach out to the bike clubs and the, you know, the car cruise clubs and the tractor cades. And I mean, I, I agree with, with Harley, I mean, I, I think that, or sorry, Kevin. My apologies. I agree with Kevin, we're, we have to have three public meetings in order to change this ordinance, if I'm not correct. And these groups have demonstrated, they've demonstrated that they're aware, they follow the news, they show up to give us their, their opinions and their input. As far as I'm concerned, that is working with those groups. And I wouldn't be concerned that you're gonna have bicycle, bicycle groups come in, you're gonna have the Corvette clubs come in and you're gonna have a whole bunch of groups by going above and beyond our normal ordinance process. If we're gonna invite specific groups to have conversations with, to Sheriff Kennedy's point, where does that stop? As far as who are you going to not include in that conversation? And then you run the risk of, of being accused of not being inclusive to all of the.
But that's our job, that's our, that's our role as three supervisors, that's our role is to have that input. Sheriff Kennedy, you don't have to come to all those meetings if everybody signs up and we all have meetings after meetings after meetings. But I think that this probably is a, a bigger issue than we think, to change it to a number. And when we decided on twenty-four, we were with rooms full of people. It was during the ATV ordinance part of our county history. So I think that this is great to have an initial conversation, but I think it, they, the success of the ordinance in large part was because that they police themselves, so to speak, right? They knew the rules, they shouted out the rules, they even attempted to do this, they generalized. There was a, a ride that happened several years ago and they tried to release the ATVs in twenty-four clumps, clumps of twenty-four. Clumps of twenty four. Well, you go now and we'll hold back. So they don't have to get a special permit. Well, we've all handled that and that was all. You know, we worked through that and I don't think there's been an issue like that since. But. I think it's an opportunity to. To reach out to them and bring them in. I'm not worried that, you know, we will have news coverage. It'll be a public hearing. But I don't have a problem reaching out to, you know, we know who the big groups are. We've got their permits. Who does the rides and the tours? We, we know that.
One more component, uh, in the statewide ATV, UTV legislation, they did remove the language that. Has us wanting to work with the clubs. So we are not compelled to work with the clubs in any way. According to that legislation. Now, obviously it behooves us to reach out and have those public hearings for the ordinance. But there's no language that specifically says that we need to work with the clubs. That was, uh, the version of legislation prior to the one. That was ultimately signed into law.
The ordinance had twenty four, right?
Yeah.
Looking at going to fifty, so I doubt very much there'd be much, uh, complaining about it, so.
You would hope not.
Give me that one.
Well, I guess this is the suggestion we could, we could, um, you know, kind of together revised ordinance and.
Just a clerical error in sixty three dash three point six. Um, I think that a funeral procession isn't. That word is.
Incident.
I don't know. That's a Latin word. I think it's a misspelling of incident. It's just clerical, like, if we're gonna change it, let's grab it.
Then you'd have something to work with, you know what I mean?
Good with the fifty thing to move forward with that, Russell, or? Stay lower or?
Well, I mean, ultimately, it's whatever. Feels safe and I know we have had the twenty four in the past, so fifty seems reasonable.
I don't know that there's been that many that, I mean, there's been some rides that were over that, no doubt, you know. But the ones that are over, way over, I don't know that there's that many that would even. Qualify for. That there'd be that many groups getting together.
There wouldn't be that much of a difference.
They're over, they're way over the twenty five anyway. It's not like it's going to create a big change.
Right.
Just when they have their, uh, benefits, whether it's dirty earnings or, uh.
What's the purpose of the number? So is it? Give them guidelines on what? Gather at once? Or is it, you know, just how much our roads can handle and?
It's more to give the sheriff's office an idea of where the, what the routes are. So we can get it out to, to the general public that, hey, there's going to be this ATV ride fundraiser. They're going to be traveling these routes. You may want to stay off of those roads.
That actually happen?
It's published usually. Posted, you know.
So then it'll go back to the number, so. One is too much versus a hundred. I, I'm not, I'm just trying to think of. What the number really helps to try. I mean, obviously, usually less is better. If you have five motorcycles versus fifty five, you're statistically probably. Better, safer for both parties, but, um. I guess that's, I would be looking for more, more like a hundred unless somebody can tell me why. A hundred's bad and fifty's good.
Yes.
Otherwise, it's the public, it's the money and it's the process. If the process doesn't add value, drop the process. So I'm kind of wondering what's the value of, so back to my question of insurance, what's the value of the insurance if we're the government? Again, for the first million and then they go after others.
Would this permit apply, uh, to like RagBri? Would RagBri need to apply for a special event permit? Under this process?
Cause you're talking about.
So yes, and that they do apply.
For that, so as far as the process having merit, otherwise you don't have the pro- I think the process certainly has merit. Um, especially for instances like that, when you're going to talk about thousands of, of bikes coming through, um.
Good point.
So if this, if this special event permit application is not only for twenty five ATVs or fifty five cars. Or twenty five hundred bikes. Now that, we just need to keep that in the back of our mind that dismissing it outright would probably not be a fantastic way to go. Because routes are published, you know.
Question was the number.
Well, and, and I under- I get what you're saying, but at some point you have to quantify it. Because otherwise then it's just, you know, everybody's. Personal opinion on what they feel is safe or, uh. Or good for traffic flow, safety, all this other stuff, uh, you know, and people's opinions vary greatly. On what that number would be. So I think.
Guys are out there the most, so that's why I'd say what? Fifty? So I, I'll hit you hard on that again. What is, what, what, what?
Personally, my number was, my number was the twenty five for the ATVs because they're going slow. It's kind of like the tractor gates.
Yeah.
You put twenty five tractors in a row and they're going fifteen to twenty miles an hour. It's a traffic hazard. You get it out where a public knows what the routes are, people avoid it. Okay, now we're reducing the risk here. Now, safety is, it's not about. You know. Seeing that we can jam somebody up. It's about safety. It's about. If something happens on the road. That they're scheduled to be on, the sheriff can, hey, this road's going to be closed because of a fatality or some bad accident or whatever. They can change their route before we have a big, you know, section of road blocked up.
I, I'd like to see us find a number that, that the clubs are willing to, to stand behind and encourage as well.
They were standing behind the twenty four pretty well, I thought. So, I mean. We can have a meeting with them, that's fine.
Like you said, I, I don't have a problem involving people, but I don't think that it's prudent for us to reach out to specific groups. I think it. I think we have public meetings every week. I think, uh, they have the ability to come, uh, to public hearings and discuss the matter. Um, they can pay attention to the, to the, um. You know, the weekly agendas, just like any other taxpaying person in this county that is, i- in part of any group. That might be affected here that we don't even know about. So, I mean, to me, uh, I think. You know, that's the, the more prudent way to, to go about it is just. Put it out blanket for anybody and then whoever shows up can show up and. They, they can say whatever they want to say about it. And then, you know, you get. Everybody's opinion regardless of what type of vehicle they drive, bike, UTV, car, motorcycle, whatever.
I would trust you too and certainly the department, you know, as far as the number. As if to handle the, the issues and or the process.
Well, yeah, we'll come up with something and, uh, try to get back with you guys in a couple of weeks or whatever.
Motion to recess until nine AM.
Will second that.
Have a motion to second to recess till nine. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aaron recess until nine.
Nine o'clock, I'll call the Board of Supervisors in the session for our Tuesday, July 5th, 2022 meeting. This time we have public comments. Anyone may address the board on matters of which are on the agenda. Please go to the podium, state your name and home address. Individuals wishing to comment on a public hearing will be given the opportunity during that respective hearing. Individual remarks are limited to three minutes. Do we have anyone in chambers wishing to address the board? Seeing no one in chambers, do we have anyone on Zoom, Kevin?
We do not.
Move forward with the proclamations. There are no proclamations for approval at this meeting. Next, we have approval in the minutes of the meeting of June 27th, 2022.
Motion to approve the minutes.
I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve the June 27th minutes. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next, we have consent items. We have a 14-day liquor license for the Dubuque County Fairgrounds.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent item for the Dubuque County Fair.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the liquor license for the Dubuque County Fair. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have procurement procedures, which we have none for this meeting. There are no public hearings for this meeting. We have no plats for approval for this meeting. Action items. Have a resolution to approve the hiring of deputies assistants and clerks.
Motion to approve the resolution.
I will second that.
They have a motion and a second to approve the hiring of deputies assistants and clerks. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next, we have a resolution to approve the Township Trustee and Clerk Referendum for Washington and Taylor Townships. Kevin, do you want to give context?
Yes, good morning, everybody. Back in January, I had sent out a memo to the Board of Supervisors indicating that Washington and Taylor Townships are the last two townships in Dubuque County that elect their trustees and clerk. The purpose of the letter and this resolution is to put the question back to the citizens within those townships as to whether or not they would like to continue electing their trustees and clerk. In many cases, for both of those areas, the same trustees and the same clerk are elected every time with zero opposition on the ballot. This would bring those two townships in line with the rest of the townships in our county. It is not a huge money saver, but it does save a little bit in ballot styles. And, and I respectfully request the approval of this resolution. Once, should it be approved, we will then begin an outreach program with those two townships, letting them know this is what it would mean. This is sort of what the track record and the history has shown as far as who's getting elected, and that the appointment process would largely not change who is serving in those positions in both of those townships.
Know that that vote was in 2002, so 20 years ago.
Correct. There was a vote in 2002 for all of the townships, whether or not they would choose to move.
All at once.
All at once, and all but two approved it at that point.
Any other questions or comments?
A little more context on what the trustees do, clerks and the.
The trustees levy your EMS and fire for the trustees, for the township, rather. The, they also handle fence disputes.
I knew there was.
The clerks handle all the administrative business concerning those items. It is a bit of an antiquated system at this point these days, but we still do have really good trustees that serve in these positions, so.
Who handles the fence disputes?
The trustees themselves do.
That's pretty much what they spend their time doing.
I think they would agree with that as well. There's been talk about taking some of those duties and spreading them around, and whether or not there's a need for trustees in this day and age. That, that conversation is infantile at best and does not get a whole lot of traction across the state. But it is a conversation that at some point probably needs to be had.
I think that that's a major role, and they're much more active with regard to fence than folks understand who don't live with fences.
In regards to the budget, that is a couple of weeks a year. The fence disputes come in when they come in, you know. So, right about the time your neighbor and you are done talking civilly about it, that's when the trustees unfortunately step in, so. Other questions?
And for me, that sounds like a good idea. And then when would this go on in front of the public?
This would go on the November ballot.
And just for.
In those two townships, correct.
Great, special ballots just for those townships.
Correct. Ever though, they'll already have a ballot style, so. Two sets of languages, one for Taylor and one for Washington are indicated on the resolution.
You looking for a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the resolution related to the townships and the trustees.
Have a motion and a second to approve the Township Trustee and Clerk Referendum for Washington, Taylor Townships. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Next, we have communications, Farley Consolidated Industrial Commercial Urban Renewal Areas Amendment. Any.
They're simply amending their urban renewal plan. The public hearing is set for July 13th at 10 o'clock at City Hall at 206 First Street North in Farley.
Take care of this with one motion.
You can, you can accept all three, yes.
Motion to receive and file.
I will second that motion.
Just for the first one?
For all three.
Have a motion and a second to receive and file all three communications, which is the Farley Industrial Communication Urban Commercial Urban Renewal Areas, Manure Management Plan. Two manure management plans, sorry. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next, we have appointments. Greater Dubuque Development Corp. The application from Jason Weston. He has been the person on the board, correct me on.
It's an annual appointment. It's part of their annual meeting.
They're at large, so countywide appointment that they've provided us.
It was once Jackie Ray.
Pardon?
It was once Jackie Ray from Dyrusville Economic Development. She now has her own seat. So we have an at-large position, and he served two years already. It's an annual appointment. And he's already involved with GDDC, and I support this application.
Or a motion to.
I will make that motion to appoint Jason Weston to the Greater Dubuque Development Corporation's board.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to appoint Jason Weston to the Greater Dubuque Development Corporation Board. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have open vacancies. For information only. Hold on to the personnel requisitions. Human Resource Director, the personal requisition form attached.
Motion if I might. So are we going to do this? Who's going to help us do this? We're going to post this, and people are going to begin to apply to you to, as the auditor, to us. I, I like the, I like what we've done, but are we ready to do this? And if so, how, what's the, what are the steps?
Well, my understanding is the steps initially will be that the job description is posted to the same outlets that we would post in a position, NeoGov being one of them. That will then broadcast that position across the state. When I did a quick search last week looking for higher level HR positions that were open within the state of Iowa, there appeared to be three of those positions, and two of them were more in the job coaching HR-related fields, at least on NeoGov's website. So as those applications come in, they get collected by the HR department, and then it would be, after that job posting is closed, those would be turned over to the Board of Supervisors for your input and your decisions on who you would like to move forward with. As that position does report directly to the Board of Supervisors, my opinion is that the three supervisors are the ones who will be leading that hiring of that position, unless anybody disagrees.
And we would have staff assist, I imagine, with interviews.
Yes, that's, your, your comment is the reason I asked the question. Are we ready to post it? Do we know what we're going to do? Terms of developing questions, who's going to be in the input? Is it one interview only? Do we want to have a secondary interview process where they mark up one of our union contracts? I mean, I, I don't know, without having.
Supervisor Wickham, you've been here the longest. When you hired, when the board hired some of these positions that reported to the board, what was the process that you used in the past?
We had a subcommittee on one of them. I remember meeting in the old jail. So that was a group of five or seven people, somewhere in the neighborhood. There was a couple of private sector people that we engaged and went through those interviews. Did each. Both, both the Budget Director and the HR Director. That's kind of my memory.
Did each supervisor have a chance one-on-one with the candidates, or was it?
No, I don't believe that. You know, I, not in a, maybe not in a formal interview. I think I personally contacted both or all candidates at one point just to talk to them briefly, and I'd let them know this is just me, it's informal. You know, reach out communication, but led into the board. It was organized, and I think we were probably even in session, so to speak.
So it sounds as though we have maybe an idea of what a framework could be, but that it is still, could be broadly open to whichever course of action the current board would want to take.
Would my colleagues have interest in having Gary McAndrew help us? I understand we've retained him to do some HR interim work for the county.
We have.
And so we have a contract with him. What would you think of, of having him do that on a contract basis for us? So that he can, or someone can step us through this so that we look very professional, and we're doing this in a way that we get a top-tier candidate.
It would create a single point of contact for candidates, which is not a bad thing. And then he could, he could disseminate the information to any number of internal people that are identified.
Though I haven't seen the contract, and I definitely support his firm helping us, but from my understanding is when he's involved in that type of process, it's usually a decent percentage of their first-year wage. So you'd be looking at probably added expenses in the neighborhood of $20,000 to $30,000, which maybe it's worth it. But that's typically what he would say, hey, sure, no problem. I'll be happy to be part of the recruitment and interviewing process. And, and maybe that's already in our contract, and so that's what your HR director would typically do. And if you look at, you know, the position related to, you know, a few months' salary, you're going to be close to that dollar amount anyway.
Given the, given the large expense, and, and I believe that's probably very, very accurate as far as what it would cost us to retain somebody to do that search. And given the, the, the fact that there are few of these higher-level HR positions going, I'm not one to usually say, let's wing it, but this may be an opportunity where we could see what our job postings gather us in the first seven to 10 days. And if we don't get what we would like, we could then move forward with the firm. I think that there is an opportunity here to maybe not have to spend that $20,000 to $30,000, which is about, on average, what a, what a search firm would, would have out there for you to do that for you.
That's what, getting Aunt McAndrew involved, which he reached out initially to do the search for the person. I think we have enough qualified people around here. I'd say, let's post it for the seven to 10 days, see what we get. We don't get anything? Okay, then we have to go that route of hiring him to, you know, search. I think we can save that money.
So over the weekend, when I was out and about, conversation occurred with city administration in one of our smaller communities where just the adage that was said is, if you want to have a Class A city, you need to hire a Class A personnel. If we want to have a Class A county, be hiring someone to help us get that Class A person. If, if this doesn't go well for any reason, it could definitely affect our ability to attract top talent. So that is a story that's just been shared out in the county generally, that if you want to get that top-tier candidate, you need to go at it in a way that's in top tier, not just by default if we don't get something. I don't, I just, I'd like to find that a little bit of what we're doing is going out and putting our best case forward and sharing the story of the county, and, and I don't know how we do that as three individuals who can't talk to each other outside of a quorum, so.
I think you're doing it already, though, and having those conversations with the people in the towns and having the conversations with the people around the county. I think you're already doing that as far as letting them know that we are capable of finding top-tier candidates. I mean, we have top-tier people working for us already, and the, the idea that we should be able to attract and find those people and, and vet those people is probably fair, that we can do that, that we could at least have a shot at it internally. And that it's not one or the other, you know, that we could do, we can do both, you know, in succession if we need to. If there were, if there were 700 or 400 or even 36 high-level HR positions available in the state, I would probably not be coming to you with this, with this proposal. I think that, given that there are not a whole lot out there, that there are going to be some HR professionals that are high-level, that are going to see the position, see the benefits, see the location, see the town, see the county, and, and perhaps may want to move, make the move here.
It's competitive pay scale, I mean, it's.
What did you say, Harley?
It's a competitive pay scale, I think.
And we did, we did rework and perform a salary study as well on this position.
Who's doing this HR work for us? Is that you, Kevin, as the auditor, that you did a competitive salary? Who, who's doing that workup?
I did the workup myself for the salary. I took a look at Dallas, Story, Potawatomi, and Woodbury Counties. And then I took a look at what private sector HR professionals are being paid for the level that we would need. The pay scale that's proposed falls directly in line with the four counties I mentioned, and then it falls towards the center of the pack for what comparable HR professionals are being paid in the private sector.
I have great respect for you, as you know, as the auditor and as a personal friend. But I am concerned that the HR of our top position, that that recruitment or that process is being handled by our auditor. I just think we need to make sure that we're all comfortable with that.
In 80 other counties in the state of Iowa, the auditor is your Human Resources Director. So this is not out of the ordinary for, for how business as usual was performed in the majority of the counties within the state. And while I've been helping with this process along with our Budget Director and our Project Coordinator, we are not the decision-makers, and ultimately, the Board of Supervisors gets to decide who we hire and who does what.
Talked about exactly that, and you're doing exactly that. And we all, as a board, and we didn't make official motion, but we all were involved in that conversation that that was going to fill in and help. Thank you for doing it. Yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable with the process and trying to get, one, this out, the posting out, and then, two, we still have full-time staff who are right here that handle HR activities.
And.
They've done a great job so far.
To be clear, they have done a fantastic job. And, and Mr. McAndrew is here to handle the high-level things that are beyond our reach. But as far as holding that office together, Tanya and Tracy could not be doing better right now. I'm comfortable with that process.
I would just say that, you know, this is, this would be the time for us to do this in the public if we were going to hire somebody in, in the, in the public view. Mr. McAndrew came to us through a flurried situation that occurred rather off the cuff, and I think we made a decision, I was asked to make a decision within an hour. So that's, I guess, the reason why I bring that to us today in an open meeting to say, you know, I, I would rather not be in a situation where we're making that determination because of something that's happening that we need to try to get ahead of.
Just to clarify, there was no operation outside of our procurement policy for Mr. McAndrew. He does fall underneath the thresholds for not needing an RFP. And, and so, and it was reactionary, but oftentimes, our job in the government is being reactionary. And it was important in this case for us to react quickly, which is why we communicated last week to retain him.
That's why I gave you my wholehearted support at that time. This is an opportunity to try to be proactive and not reactionary, but I also understand that we feel we're in a good place, so.
So they'd be looking for a motion to approve the personnel requisition.
Make the motion to approve.
I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve the personnel requisition for the permanent full-time Human Resources Director. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Here he is.
Appreciate all of your help. Thank you.
Thank you for everything you've done, Kevin. Job description is attached to that. Go to public comments. At this time, anyone may address the board on matters of which are of concern to that person and which are not agenda items. Please go to the podium, state your name and home address. Please be aware that the board is limited in their ability to respond to such inquiries. And Iowa code prohibits a board from deliberating or acting on items not appearing on the agenda. Individual remarks are limited to three minutes. Do we have anyone wishing to address the board in chambers? Do we have anyone online wishing to address the board?
We do not.
Entertain a motion to recess till 9:30.
I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to recess till 9:30. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. During recess till 9:30. Fellow Board of Supervisors back into session. The nine thirty work session, possible action with the auditor and sheriff to discuss amendment to Dubuque County procurement policy. Sheriff Kennedy and Auditor Drago.
Come on down. You're the next contestant on. Good morning, everybody. Sheriff Kennedy and I were taking a look at our procurement policy and became aware that there was a component normally referred to as sole source procurement that is not included within our policy. Sole source is effectively a section that under very, very specific circumstances would allow us to purchase without going through the RFP process when there was a vendor, only one vendor, for example, for a number of different reasons, that would sell the product or service that we're looking for. In the case of the sheriff and in my case, in the coming months, we have a purchase between each of us that we have one vendor who can fulfill that request. And in many cases, the ability to negotiate directly with that vendor on price. In my case, it would be for elections equipment. And I'll let Sheriff Kennedy speak to his case in a second here. The RF, the traditional RFP process would require that our vendors submit a bid. And once that bid is submitted, we are accepting that bid. Especially where our elections equipment is concerned, the ability to negotiate with the one person, the one company in the state of Iowa that is allowed by law to sell us the equipment. We have a much stronger footing using sole source. This is not a addition to the policy that I would expect is being used frequently. This is just another piece of giving us a tool in which we can procure these services and the goods that we need in looking at this. And I can put the language up on the screen in a second here. We're able to look at a number of different entities. Oh, Polk County, the state of Iowa, and the federal government all have various sole source procurement portions to their policy. The language I went with was the language that Polk County use, uses in their procurement policy. And as you can see, it does lay out very specific ways that you can use this policy. It's not just a blanket approval. And every purchase would have to come with a sole source justification statement from the department head or elected leader or elected official that would be attached to the claim. And I'd Bailey, our external auditing firm, has taken a look at the language and given its seal of approval. He had actually asked us if we had a sole source component prior to this issue arising about a month ago. So I'm happy to answer any questions. I'm happy to, Sheriff Kennedy can offer some input from his side of it.
Yeah. Auditor Drago and I spoke about this issue a few weeks ago. We have, well, we are going to be purchasing our body cams here in the near future, and our intent is to work, to do that jointly with the city of Dubuque. Where, you know, as you know, we have many, many things that we join with them on and with this. We thought it was important as far as like storage and, and everything for the videos to continue to partner with them. We have demoed different equipment. We have found the equipment that we, that we wish to purchase. And it's from a company that we also have other equipment with. And they, there is proprietary software that links those, that equipment together that no other company has the ability to match. And, and we have been negotiating with them for the last two months on price in order to get, to make it a reasonable price. And you know, essentially, you know, can we send out for an RFP? Yes, but it's only going to delay the inevitable for, you know, the next two months. And with the the problem we're running into is we've got our current body worn cameras there. That contract is up in December, and it's going to take us at least six months to get new body worn cameras. The vendor that we were using, they also were our vendor for our in car cameras. Those cameras are starting to fail. And so we're going to be switching over to the new company for in car cameras as well. And the in car cameras could take up to a year to get in just because of, you know, supply chain issues. And so we kind of need to get on this as quickly as possible, given the fact that anymore, if you go to court, if it's not on video, nobody thinks it happened. So it's a very important piece to our, to what we do. And us being able to work with the county attorney's office and get convictions is to have video available. And, you know, we're getting to the point where that might not be possible for a few months until we get our equipment upgraded. So, given the fact, as I said, you know, if I thought that there were multiple companies that could come in and they could bid competitively and give us a good price, then, you know, I, I'd be more than happy to, to go out for an RFP and try to get the best price for, for, you know, not only for the equipment that we want, but also, you know, for the taxpayers. But given the fact that literally no other company can provide the equipment with the software that we need attached to it. There's, there's no reason for that company if we go out to RFP to honor our negotiated price at that point. Because they know that they've kind of got us, so.
And that company did, in fact, request procurement under sole source and, and does mention it in their documentation as well. So they are aware that they have, they have worked with other counties and other jurisdictions where sole source has been implemented. And so that's how the purchase has taken.
Thought that by using the sole source, you'll get a better price? Because you're not, they're not having to post it publicly for all the world to see? Is that what you're saying?
I believe so. I believe it gives us the opportunity to negotiate the price and because when they gave us our, the first price, we said, no, we're not, we're not, or they gave us the first quote, we, we said, no, we're not interested in paying that much. And we've been able to work with them and figure out, you know, what, what meets our needs and also, you know, gives us a good price for, for the product. And they've been, they've been very good to work with. And, you know, like you said, if we go out for RFP, they know they're the only, they, number one, they know they're the only company that can provide the service that we need. And number two, they know that we're going to have to accept the lowest bid that they provide for that service. So, you know, given the situation, you know, I think we're actually going to get a better price by what we negotiated through the process.
But in, and in addition to also having the ability to maintain the ability to negotiate, it also affords us some safety and security measures where, when we are looking at very specific purposes or purchases, rather, we are unable or unwilling in some cases to divulge what our network requirements are, what our technological requirements are, what the very specific pieces of equipment that we are getting, depending on the application. You know, in, in elections, for example, we have secure information for a lot of our equipment that we, that is not released to the public, and that's for the safety of that equipment operation and the safety of, of the election itself. This allows us to purchase without publishing all of the requirements and everything that we're looking for. This is why the bar is set exceedingly high for this, and this is why a justification form is, is attached with each claim. Because we need to be able to show our external auditing firm anytime that this is implemented or used, that here is the justification showing, here's the proof, here is the research we did, and here's why it's a valid sole source purchase. Again, I don't see this as being something that you're going to see happen very often at all. It is just another component sort of rounding out our procurement policy that is fairly common.
So Cartograph, a company I was with for twenty years, we sold mainly to government. Our income was not through bid nor RFP, so below, you know, thresholds like our fifty thousand that we have. So it is very common. And, you know, for unique applications and technologies usually follows in that, elections voting certainly follows in that. So it's very common. I fully support it. I'm surprised we didn't have it. I've never really pulled back the covers to see, or has anyone ever asked us for sole source? But yeah, it's been around for my whole business career and it's worked well. Because you have the discretion of three bids, which might be difficult to get, under fifty thousand. And so practice quite often. So I, I support it and I appreciate you bringing it forward.
We, we do have, Nathan Gilmore has raised his hand if the board would like to speak with Nathan.
I certainly would like to hear from Nathan.
Yep. Go ahead, Nathan.
Hey, good morning. I'm just lurking in the background while doing other things. I didn't realize this was on the agenda, but I can tell you, I actually have a challenge with one of my capital projects that I've been trying to find a second vetted and qualified vendor. And Cook knows I'm not going to find one, and I've been going in circles trying to find it. So I, I think this would have value for those specific instances that Auditor Drago was talking about, especially with technology where this, I would absolutely support this too. If this could be implemented to the policy, it would help me out with this one specific project I'm working on.
Nathan Supervisor McDonough, how big is the project you're talking about? I'd like to know some kind of idea of the numbers that we're speaking of that might be impacted by single source.
Um, this is specific to the wired network access control project. It's coming in probably about twenty one thousand. And nearly all of it will be professional services, but I've been trying to find another vendor that can do this the way we need to do it. And I'm not finding much success with that. So I think between being professional services and if this was also added, I, I think we would be in the clear then from a due diligence standpoint.
Sheriff and the auditor, do you have a, is it about a, an amount?
I mean, for the, for elections equipment, we're, we're still a ways out, but I can tell you that the estimate for what we'll be purchasing will be between seven hundred thousand and one point two million. I mean, that depends largely on, on the equipment and if there are upgrades between now and then. But our, our useful life is approaching, I believe, our scanners that we use were purchased in twenty fourteen. And so typically eight to ten years is what we get. And obviously, we're, where the technology is changing much more rapid than that. So, but again, in my case, there is one company. And they are approved by the Secretary of State and the state of Iowa that sells us our elections equipment. And so being able to sit down with, with the folks at Atkins and say, here's where we're at, here's where I need to be, is, is me a much more stronger point of negotiation.
As far as we're concerned, I mean, I don't know what, if you're looking for a dollar amount cap, our project is about three quarters of a million dollars over, spread out over five years. But I know, like, coming up, as I talked to you guys about, at the, at our budget presentation, you know, in the, within the next two years, we're going to be needing to upgrade our, our RMS system. They're estimating the cost of the county on that is going to be, you know, upwards of a million, maybe a million and a half. And I think Harley can, can tell you the, the current RMS system that we have is a pain in the ass. And we want to make sure that when we get our new system, that it's We want to make sure that when we get our new system, that it's something that's functional for people at every level. And I think, you know, a situation like that, you know, where we have, we will have a group of people dedicated to going out, demoing different. Systems and things like that, you know. If you try to put that through an RM or an RFP and especially considering that that's something that we do jointly with the city also. You know, they, as far as this project that we're talking about now, the, the camera project. The city is not going out for RFP on their end of it, so.
That has something to do, the cameras are specific to. Linking with the tasers, yada, yada, which.
Correct.
There's no company that can do that other than the one that.
The, the company that makes the cameras that we're looking at also makes tasers and they have special software. That when a person draws their taser out of their holster, it automatically turns on the body worn camera. Obviously, they are the only company that has that software that allows them to, that allows that to happen. And that's something that, you know, when you're talking about tasers, you're talking about, you know, that's a high liability thing for the county. This is something that would help protect the county from, from frivolous lawsuits.
So it sounds like a cap doesn't work and I know it's not in the policy, but then what, what are the other? I guess oversight protocols that are in place.
Each.
You know, we're talking now about being able to go out and you by yourself can negotiate one point five million dollars contracts based on. You know, the sole procurement kind of idea, what, what, how does it come back?
Well, the, the board will still be approving all of these purchases and contracts. So the first layer of, of defense, actually the second layer of defense after the elected official department, who has thoroughly vetted this. Would be the board ultimately is deciding whether or not to move forward with the purchase or not. Additionally, sole source purchases are going to be scrutinized by our external auditing firm. And by the auditor's office, the last thing I want is the auditing firm to come in here and say that something wasn't done correctly. So these justification forms are going to be thorough, the statements are going to be clear. They're going to outline the steps that were taken to arrive at that point. They don't need to be volumes and volumes or pages and pages, but I think we'll have as much if not more oversight. Because this is something that our auditing firm is going to want to see what those, what the justification for those purchases was to go outside of the RFP process.
Is it possible to put into the sole ser- sole source purchase? Agreement that you had here before us, something that states that, that it will still be subject to the procurement procedures? With final review by the Board of Supervisors, you know, you talk about it's going to be attached to a claim. The claims are the piles of things that we look at once a week.
That's inherent that this is not circumventing the fact that we're not going to need to come to the board for a, for a purchase. So I don't know that it's, we can certainly add that. When I looked at the language that's in the state of Iowa and Polk County, this is the language. I changed some county names to Dubuque County, you know, I did what every other county in the state does. One person did it right and everybody adopts the same thing. So I'm comfortable that the language we have in this procurement policy protects us and covers us. In, in relationship to the rest of the procurement policy and then the procedures we have in place internally and externally with our auditing firm.
And lays out the steps that you have to go to use that policy.
And I think the fact that, that the company that does our auditing year in and year out, who we trust to do that. Has vetted this policy and, and correct, they had, they have, I have approval from Ida Bailey that this language is, is acceptable for our policy. And so they saw no issues with it whatsoever. So I do have, should the board wish to move forward, this is discussion and possible action. Have a resolution prepared. And I would request approval, please.
Is there any counter position? Does our budget director have anything that you want to state about this policy, the procurement policy? That doesn't reassure me. This is the first time the budget director has seen it.
You see a problem with it still or now or?
I think sole source is fairly common in policies. I haven't looked at any other policies to see what the language is, to see how this compares or dollar thresholds. So I don't have any opinion on that at this point.
Thanks, Stella. Have any interest in make a motion to approve the sole source policy?
I will make that motion if we're done with discussions. I'll make a motion to approve the resolution related to the new sole source provisions for our procurement policy.
Second the motion.
Have a motion, a second. To approve the Dubuque County sole source procurement policy. All in favor, signify, aye.
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 Thank you for your assistance. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Next, we have a nine forty AM work session to discuss the ARPA proposal from Dubuque County Health Department.
The Chairperson of the Board of Health and I'm very lonely today. Amy Crowe Sunley is with us on Zoom, but unfortunately the other board members could not make it today. We were all here a couple of weeks ago and expressed our. Bus to you and I'm here today to answer any questions that you may have.
And invite our budget director also. I know that she's been some, you've relied on her assistance, I think, in putting together.
I believe she and Samantha have met.
Did you want to come forward too, Stella? Probably need a microphone at that table. Years ago, y'all used to sit around this little table over here and everybody had a microphone then, but COVID changed spacing.
Questions, but chair, I'm sure.
Get him over. Yeah, we can move forward. Anyone with questions regarding it. Basically, we are going to come up with a decision on what we're going to do with the ARP funds for the Board of Health. So this was brought on.
Big question is how's the search for the new director coming?
It's coming just fantastically. We have in-person interviews scheduled with three very qualified candidates next week on the thirteenth. And. But one is local, one is from Illinois and one applicant is from Oklahoma. And like I said, they're all very, very qualified and it's going to be exciting times. We have filled the clerk position and she's being oriented to the department. She's a seasoned county employee and knows the county very well. We have also filled the interim or not the interim, the assistant director position. And she actually is the former clerk of the health department. So she knows the health department. She's worked there for about nine or 10 months. And so that's exciting. And then once we get the new director in, we're going to be ready to go. That's one of the, one of our asks is to hire a consultant for strategic planning. And if we could get that approved, then that will be one of the first things that our new executive director will be. So, and then the other three. Positions that we're asking for, they're really people that will do program development so that we can then get some grants in place. You can't go out and get a grant if you don't have any people to do the grant work. So we do have to have some people in place so that we can go and find these grants. And the people that we are interviewing for the executive director position all have experience with. Finding grants, writing grants and running grants. So we're excited about that.
I agree that, you know, you do need somebody looking for the grants. Or the strategic plan, if we looked at, say, Lynn County or any other county, looked at their strategic plan.
Have looked at them, yes.
I spend thirty thousand on something that's already there, it doesn't, because I can't imagine their strategic plan would be much different than ours. The Department of Health is Department of Health.
And those would be quite a bit different because they have fifty employees and.
They also have the VNA who gives us a lot of employees. I'm talking about the strategic plan in and of itself.
But yes, they, they have fifty employees, but they also contract with visiting nurses and, you know, public health providers. So the strategic plan will have to be specific to Dubuque County, I think. And I think having a seasoned expert, a real expert help us with that will help. The Board of Health, the Department of Health, but also the Board of Supervisors, because you know that we have put a lot of thought into the plan, so. And there are, I mean, there are other services that can be obtained for strategic planning. But we have talked to some other counties and they used an actual consultant for their strategic. That's why we, we asked for the strategic planner. And that's a one-time cost.
Questions, Jay?
My big question was the leadership, so I'm very excited to hear that news and that report that we have Candace. You'll be going through that, that interview process. Any additional help that you need from. Administration and staff, I mean, we're short HR, but we've been talking about that in a lot of positions. But any help you need during that process or anything the supervisors can.
Well, thank you. Thank you for that question, but your staff at the county, they've just been fantastic. Mr. Raver is involved with our recruiter directly. And then Samantha Klaft, our interim director, has been very involved and they are making a plan. And for a tour of the county facilities and things like that. So it's going to be a very nice day here in Dubuque for these three applicants when they come in.
Very good.
I think I've talked about this proposal a lot. And I have not had a public opportunity to ask Stella about your thoughts as the budget director about the increased staff. Because I think that's, that's a direct connection that we've not had. And so this might be an opportunity for you to share high level thought that you have about how this fits into the budget with ARPA and without ARPA.
So ARPA best fits one-time expenses, not that it can't fit others, but it best fits one-time expenses. Because we know it's a finite number that is done in three years. Essentially with the opportunity to continue on a couple more years if projects are already contracted and planned. So staffing is tougher through ARPA, not unachievable, should the board want to do that. What we need if we do fund staffing at that level through ARPA is a plan on how to fund it. After those funds are gone, will it just be absorbed into general basic? Will it be? Done at that time, you know, that's probably not what we want to see is positions coming on and then ending. When the funding is done, so what is the long-term plan to fund those positions moving forward? The strategic plan, I think, is fantastic under ARPA. I think that's a great idea. I would highly support something like that coming out of the pandemic for health.
So my concern continues to be that the funds are, the, the ARPA funds are being awarded. And we don't have a reserve of some kind. So we do a strategic plan that will come with some kind of implementation suggestions likely, just like China hip. And the hospitals, when they do their federally mandated updates, the hospitals have continued to do those. We've received an extension on our local China hip, which is not a strategic plan, but it is a public health needs assessment. So with that always comes the idea that there'll be some things that are requested. And so what we're balancing is. Knowing how they'll be funding. To implement what the requirement, what the suggestions are, right? So just simply curtailing a strategic plan is also a difficulty. For the Board of Health as they try to recover, move on from pandemic and prepare for. You know, the wide public health needs that we have here. Certainly, we know we have tuberculosis. I heard about that. That's, that is a concern. I think that's likely to draw down some of our dollars, actually. The county is required, it's my understanding, to implement the nursing side of that. That's paid then when the VNA has their shortfall, you know, Supervisor Potoff, you and I look at those claims and we see the VNA. The funding that we do to the VNA on their shortfall. So, you know, that's where, that's where that funding piece comes in, that it's paid out of general.
Basic.
Basic, right? So recognizing that there's multiple ways that we're spending. The county funding to public health, I think, helps people kind of keep track of where it's flowing from. But I, again, this is probably my fourth time saying this, I think we should be. Herbalizing some specific support for the health department. Coming out of the pandemic and the ARPA funding is intended to do that. So whether we reserve funding, they still need to come back and ask us for specifics, but. I've expressed that a few times and I think we should be reserving earmarking, setting aside. Funding for the health department from ARPA so that we have that and we won't. Spend it on other matters without certainly having an opportunity for their director and their Board of Health to be. Feel like their support.
Is that doable?
Absolutely, that's doable. I think Supervisor McDonough is right that the strategic plan will inform. A lot of how the, the Board of Health and the public health will want to move forward coming out of the pandemic. So I think it's very reasonable to believe that there would be asks that come from the strategic plan. And I think that would really help inform what kind of staffing. Is needed. So ARPA, like I said, can definitely fund those things. Obviously, public health is one of the, the critical uses of the ARPA funding. That we need to come up with a long-term plan on how to sustain those positions.
Certainly, the Board of Health and the Department of Health understands that. And I mean, our goal has always been to get these. Full-on staff so that we can develop programs so that we can get grants. And it, it doesn't happen that the money comes first and then you get the staff. It just doesn't work that way. So we did have specific, first of all, we shared our plan with the applicants for the executive director position. And then we had specific questions for them during the interviews about what they thought of our plan to increase and expand our health department. And one hundred percent of the people said it's a good plan. Well, it looks like these people are necessary. And all of the applicants and the three that are coming in for in-person interviews. Are very excited about being the leader of a department that is growing and expanding and. Have so much potential here in this county. Start and I think. Those comments about the strategic planning and I agree with that, but I do think that we need. That the director has somebody to work with. We have an assistant, we have one person that's in the environmental section and she's busy all the time. Have to, to get the work done and I think you, you all know that, you're, you're all business people, so.
It does, but. some of the confusion comes in is want to hire people who don't have a direction or a director yet to give us direction. That's where I get confused with. I would like to see the director hired and in place and let the director decide which path we need to take. Otherwise, it just seems like we're going at this backwards and we're going to end up with a disaster. I think we have to have the director in place and get a feel of the health department and decide which areas we need to address first and move down that way. Instead of us trying to fill backfill positions. You know, the assistant director's position. Not quite sure how that played out is obviously I didn't have any part in it, but three moves from a part time clerk to assistant director is like, was there any other applications or what? You know, it just seemed like this all set up beforehand or something. I don't know. I just want to be transparent about it.
The Board of Health wasn't in charge of that hiring. That that was the interim director by bylaws and but there were, I believe there are four to six applicants that were interviewed and two members of the Board of Health were involved in the interviews and had, you know, some input as to who should take that position. And she was the most qualified. She has a business degree and she has management experience. And I asked the question.
I just insert something here. I don't want to talk about human resources in this context. We have an empty chair because we don't have an H R director to hold up the the slow card, right? Like, we don't want to be talking about qualifications of applicants specific to a person. I think unless we're going to do that in a different setting. Maybe that's me wearing the wrong hat. I'm looking at my H R.
That's that's correct. If we're going to start discussing qualifications or or specific items that.
I was just wondering about how many applicants there was. That's all I was.
Yeah, the the question of how many applications were received would be perfectly acceptable to answer. If we're talking about the quality of a candidate, we definitely would want to shy away from that.
But we're not here right now as the liaison to the Board of Health and the Chair of the Board asking, there's no personnel requisition, there's nothing specific. These are ideas and those are ideas that will be happening with the new director. That's what I understand you to be saying. The new director will be implementing that part of it. And that person will come meet us and bring forth their assessment of the need, but I continue to hear the Board of Health talk about having access to the ARPA funding to do items that they're, I mean, they're in constant flux, right? So they can't come here and show you a a bill for something or that they've gone out for proposals and here's the the lawnmower that we need to hire. That that's not that's not the analogy of what they do, but they are asking us to set aside ARPA funds for health department for whatever those unyet identified needs are because of the transition that they are in. I don't imagine we're the only health department in the country in this kind of transition. So that's the request for us, whether we choose to say it's these three staff people or we say, yes, there's, I think we've said many times, we have support for the idea. It's got to be brought into the budget somehow. They understand that doesn't happen overnight, but I would like to see us set aside a sum that is used for the health department from ARPA. It fits. And the reason don't have the director who can make that directly link for us. There's not a direct link right now. Do you, am I explaining myself well?
Basically, what I said is I want the director to I don't have an issue with putting some money aside in the A R P, but as Don's or Stella said, sorry. That really isn't what the A R P funds were for, for personnel. For the strategic plan, perfect. Personnel should be under our budget.
It can be either way. I don't want to say it's not for that because it is, you know, public health is specifically called out under many parts of the ARPA funding due to it being a public health disaster that created this. What I'm saying is that the one time expense is best fit because our funding is finite. And so, you know, it's a finite amount and a finite time that it has to be used. So while it absolutely can be used for several years to fund this, we have to have our own plan on how we continue it. So we're not saying, well, sorry, employees, thank you for being here for two years. Goodbye. You know, that's not what we want to be doing.
Don't envision that happening because of the new direction that we're taking and getting grant writing to be a priority in grant finding. But just to reassure you also Supervisor Potoff, this plan was developed by our former executive director and the interim director now. They together developed this plan and brought it to the Board of Health. So they did it, they developed it from from knowledge. They've been working, they had been working in that department. I think Patrice Lambert worked there for twelve years or something. So it's not.
Goes back to.
Yeah.
Either one of them are going to be here. That's why I want a new person to see, put a new set of eyes on it and say, okay, is this the way we want to go?
Right, right. I I understand your concerns. However, I think it's kind of universal what they've, what we're asking for, that it's not, it's not, it's not so far out there that some new director is going to say, boy, you people were really off there. In fact, they've already told us, you've got a great plan here and we're excited about leading it.
I want the job, I'd probably tell you that too personally, but I wouldn't say your plans stinks.
Well, actually, they might distinguish themselves by pointing out things that they would do differently. I mean, that's just another way to look at how you distinguish yourself as an applicant, but would there be a problem with saying that we would set aside for further discussion with the health department? Half a million dollars of ARPA funding, leaving it open to further review. It isn't a grant to them, but it is saying that there's still folks who are unknowns. Whether it's personnel or implementation, you know, we're going to roll right into other discussion and according to the notes from our project coordinator, we have fifteen point seven million dollars of our eighteen point nine awarded. So, you know, it comes down to an ever smaller amount of funding that can be used. At some point, I think, saying that there's a sum that is going to be reserved for public health. I think lets the broader community know that we recognize that that is one of the intended purposes of the ARPA funding. And it also, I think, lets the Board of Health know that we genuinely value all of their true volunteer work that they do.
I think it was said this last time, we've had the funding all along. Board of Health, Stella jumped in, if I speak incorrectly, but Board of Health and the Health Department is funded through our general basic. Many others are as well funded by general basic. Those dollars, fund balances have been strong, very good. So it's a matter of priority. I hear what you're saying, Supervisor McDonough. I'm not a big fan of carving out or just setting aside public funds. I think you 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 need take tax dollars, need to put those dollars to work. You asked the budget director to come up here. She specifically said that's not the best intent of ARPA funds. And those are better used as one time. So for example, a strategic plan would be, you know, I think a really good allocation. I think we did a planning thing for City of Bangston related to their infrastructure. So I think that would be something very much support, but you know, I'm supportive of the proposal we have. I think Board Health did a tremendous job just articulating it. You've got a really good board as far as, you know, coming out of kind of the pandemic, so to speak, and I I like your ideas. It's probably a matter of order and priority. I want to get the leadership in place. I think having a document that memorializes the ideas and or the visions of the Board of Health, the public, you know, other consultants would be good and then acting on that. And facting is budgeting and doing it in place. I'm I'm ready to do that when we have those those components in place. But, you know, ARPA funds are probably not good for operational. We were dead broke, might be a good idea. Not. We're in a good position financially and the board and the staff and certainly the economic development vitality of Dubuque County has put us there. But I mean, I'm pleased I would just keep moving with your steps. I'm I'm in favor of what you're proposing. But it's doesn't have to happen today, and I don't think I can give you anything today. I think you're doing right steps and hiring a new director, going through leadership, talking about strategic plan, here's your vision. We just have to to move forward and execute those.
My concern with doing it through the budgeting process, of course, is more delay. We've waited almost a year now since last September, since we've been asking for these staff members. And if you do it through the budget process, we wouldn't be starting it till next July, another year, year and a half. Unless you approved the budget amendment, which I understand is pretty rare for new employees, but.
Help you with that. It doesn't have to be the timeframe you described. So we, the the board has moved quicker on other priorities. And so that certainly, we have that a bill. I'm not saying we're going to do that, but I think if we get leadership in place and, you know, start that planning process. You know, I'm I'm ready to fully support once we get through those items. I'm I'm not withholding support. And it's not about the funding. The ARPA funds, I just think are the wrong tool and we've always had the funds available.
It just, I mean, speaking not from the Department of Health or the Board of Health as a public member. When you have nineteen million dollars of American Rescue Funds and you're not giving one penny to the health department, your own health department. I I just, it really, it really is a blow to the health department. And it it shows, I think, the priorities of this county. So I'm I'm going to, I understand what you're saying, but I I'm just going to have to disagree. I think that there have, there has to be some ARPA funds assigned to the Department of Health. I really do. It's necessary from an operational standpoint, but it's also necessary for the public to know that you are going to use those funds to improve the health of the county, not just the economical health of the county, but the health, the physical health and the mental health of the county. And I, if you're not ready to say, okay, we'll let you have, we'll let you expand the department by three people, at least, please set some money aside so that when we get the strategic plan finished by the end of the year, we will have some money to employ some people with, because we know we need them. There is no question about.
I don't think there's any question about that, about adding to that. I think all three of us support that.
And we want to be ready.
It just comes to where the funding comes from is where the problem is. As Stella said, the A R P funds are, work for a one time use. Employees are not a one time use. That's a continuing, that's where it, if it's in the budget, okay.
But not impossible.
Continues on.
Not impossible, not impossible to use ARPA funds. I know.
It's not impossible.
Know Johnson County funds for a new employee in chronic disease prevention. I know it's possible. And we've been dancing around this for months now and we really need to, I really would think that you could assign some funds to be held until you're comfortable letting us employ some more people. Because as needed, we are only able to do the bare minimum right now with the staff that we have.
Well, that's because you're short people. You don't have a director. It's it's hard to get anything done when you don't have people. I understand that.
I'm talking about even when I I've been on the board for about a year, last year when we had the full staff. They couldn't keep up with what we needed to do. They certainly couldn't develop new programs. They just didn't have the time. So, I mean, you've got the money now. You've got nineteen million dollars from ARPA. You've got the money to build your department, your health department, and I think it needs to be done. And that's that's my request again.
I think the citizens are going to take away from their own perspective what they will from this. As you've heard, it's about priorities. I believe that Supervisor Wickham said that, and he also informed us again that we've had the money all the time. As ARPA aside, so it's about priorities. So people will need to judge based on that what it means for the success of the department. And I think it's important for all three of us to make sure that we support the Board of Health, recognizing the tremendous qualities that we have of our members and the tremendous amount of work that you invest as volunteers in the work of the health of the county that is not compensated and you lead when you are, you don't have a director. So I, that is, I think, to be, we should be so thankful for that, and I'm sure we will join in our thanks for that. But setting it as a priority, you know, it does tell you when you want to see what someone's priorities are, you look at their pocketbook.
Question quick. Does the Board want to allocate funding for strategic planning? I mean, that's one of the rest requests too, so.
Thirty thousand for a strategic plan, right?
It was an estimate, I believe.
Yeah, I think I mentioned that just five minutes ago, that I think that'd be a good use for for ARPA funds. So I mean, I can feel your frustration. Government's difficult to work sometimes. But this would be a case in point if we, other applicants have come in, here's what we want, we're going to do it. Yours was unique because it's an internal department and it was new full time employees. I don't know if I ever did see the the final budget on that for the next couple of years either. The impact it would have, assuming even used ARPA funds, would that impact be in future years? So that would be something that probably would be helpful. But specifically, yeah, if we had a proposal for the strategic plan for the health department with the understanding you're going to hire a new candidate very shortly, I think that'd make tremendous sense. I'm not disagreeing with you. I don't think you're getting like pushback. It's just maybe a matter of of the process. I really believe in having leadership in place and then giving that leadership, the the tools and the resource that they're requesting. And so volunteering, you're 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 putting your heart and soul into this, but it's not forty hours a week like the new director will do. And that's the resources we need, I think, to to get the outcomes we're looking for, that that you were looking for and proposing.
But remind the board that we granted a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to Dubuque Main Street. They do not have an executive director. One employee. So when we look for leadership in place, we're looking for leadership in place in other ways with different groups. That is not something you can say is, you know, an overriding principle of this board.
Argue about this, we can, but I think you've got two supporting people who are just talking about the process. I mean, what would change today if we say, okay, here's a million dollars from ARPA funds? Nothing. You still have to get a personal request and we still have to 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 work with the budget director to make sure that the budget and the county budget is aligned to make them stay. We'd still have to interview those candidates. We'd have to approve those and that would all come through the board. And and I believe having a director involved with that process in the next sixty, ninety days would be extremely helpful. That's kind of what I'm saying. So I mean, I, the, our general funds have supported this, would support this move without ARPA funds, since I've sat on this board. You're the first board to gather it, the Board of Health, gather it and offer that proposal. And yeah, it's just, you know, I think the it's the Board of Health and the Health Department's a little unique in that you've lost one leader and then two leaders with with Samantha leaving as well. And so that puts you in a little different position. But long story short, I think we're just talking about a, you know, a matter of months from my vantage point, not necessarily years or never.
Right. And that's where I'm at. We get the director. Right, and that's where I'm at. We get the director and director gives us job description, job opening for human resources outreach. I don't, just coming up reaching, you know, some specialists, and we can look at that and approve that. We can decide where that money comes from at that time while you're looking for that outreach specialist. And keep working it in like that instead of, okay, here's a million dollars and you can't do nothing with it anyway. Until it all goes through the process.
You could do something with it, believe me. We would start developing programs right away, because we would know that we could go forward. Right now, we're just, we're stuck. Because we don't have the funds, we can't develop programs, we can't get the grants to pay for the program, so.
And no, we had time to develop anything because we're so short of staff, to be honest with you.
We want to going, so I, I understand what you're saying.
I think there's definitely support for added personnel. It's just the process of getting that to that point.
And, and would this added personnel be considered in a budget amendment?
Yeah, I mean, that's, we've done budget amendments, so you know, I don't want to counties blame you. We've, we do, how many amendments a year? Four?
Three to five.
Three to five. So it's, it is, it's not rare. It's something that happens three plus times a year for my six years.
But bringing a budget amendment for new personnel would not be unusual for you to.
You wouldn't be the only applicant. There's, you know, other county, other departments are modifying and changing their budgets. So it's not just usually for one, there's usually.
Three amendments throughout the whole budget.
Or people.
Don't often amend in new positions, although the county doesn't often take on new positions that typically, as long as I've been here, has run through the budget process. That's not to say it can't. That's just the way it, it has gone since I've been here.
Want to say.
But at that time, we could take that money out of the ARP funds to cover it.
Yeah, often we do, even while we're doing the full budget, sometimes our capital requests are for the current year. So we have amended things in even during the budget process into the current budget, not waited for the next budget year. So, you know, we have the ability to do it at any point.
So while we don't, while we typically want to put our money to work right away, we have, this is a very unique board and a very unique department at a unique time in our country's history. We've had so many people leave the Board of Health in my three and a half year term. And it's incredibly concerning that when they all come in and they all make presentations, physicians, retired physicians, professional counselors, attorneys, retired RNs, pharmacists, they all come in and they tell us this. And we say, we hear you. But no, not now. You need to jump through these other things and we'll get you later. We've always had the funding anyway. It is incredibly discouraging. Why would they stay? Why would volunteers stay with this process if we can't offer them something that they're asking us for, which is to reserve some funding for them? Why is that difficult?
I think we've told Sandra that we're all in support of this project. And it's just a matter of getting the director on board and bringing the job descriptions ahead. I understand it. That was my feeling on it. I just wanted director to come to us with the, you know, just like we did with the human resources, here's your job, and, and we approve it that way. And we'll decide where the money comes from. I don't see anyone saying that we're not giving the Board of Health any support. I thought everybody was supporting the Board of Health.
But support is dollars. Also, and.
Right, and I understand that. But whether it's ARP or budget, it doesn't make any difference. A dollar's a dollar. Whether we give it to you ARP, it's coming out of the budget eventually because it's personnel. It's not a one-time thing. Okay, I can pay you this year out of ARP, but next year it's in my budget, so I must have got it in my budget now and working through. Not saying no, we wouldn't use ARP funds for the first year, you know, let's get a plan moving.
I mean, we understand that supporting these staff people after ARPA expires will be our responsibility. We need to make sure that we can either get it passed through the budget at that point or have grants coming in to cover that. We know that. But we can't do anything if you don't assign any money to us. And it will delay it. Your request for us to follow the procedure that you want us to follow will delay it. If you put it in reserve right now, we're going to be, once we get our executive director, you know, it will be off to the races. And that executive director may start as soon as the end of July. Depending on how much time, if the person who accepts the job has to give their current employer. It will either be the end of July, the first part of August. So we want to get going on this. So that's, that's our request and.
This is Amy's on life. Can I just add that the new director is going to be looking to the Board of Health for guidance on who these, or what these positions should be and who should be hired. And we already have some people in mind for a few of these jobs, or not specific people, but, but the type of education and experience needed to fulfill these jobs, which the director coming in won't even know, because they're just going to be getting up to speed on what Dubuque County is, what the Dubuque County Health Department is. And so we're that bedrock or foundation that the director's going to rely on. And like, like you've said, our Board of Health right now is a very seasoned as far as health perspective Board of Health. And we have a very well reasoned and well fully perspective, a big full perspective on what we can do to grow Dubuque County's Health Department. We're so excited. And the, the applicants were so excited to hear about the growth of the Health Department. And so I think too, that if we come away from another Board of Supervisors meeting saying, well, they, they, they tabled it again, it's going to be really frustrating for those applicants to hear that, that, that the Board of Supervisors is not just as excited about the future of the Board of Health as we are, or the Health Department, not the Board of Health, the Health Department, as we are.
I've been doing this the longest. I think I'm, I have good experience with the budget and I've been studying the American Rescue Funds. I won't repeat what I've said before. I'll try to do it new. I believe if you use American Rescue Funds for your positions, that will make you less secure in future years. So it will compromise your plan. These funds will run out, they will terminate by law. We also can't throw money at it right now. Have we spent a dollar of rescue funds yet? Has a dollar gone out the courthouse yet of rescue funds? None. Okay, so you, you have a person tomorrow, we can't pay them with rescue funds. We're just not there yet. And if we approve this funding for rescue funds, you'll be back with other boards redoing it. Because it's a different funding pool. And so trust me when I say, you don't want to go this route. I support what you do, but this is my job and paid to administer this. Our budget director said the same thing. Granted, it's not impossible, but you don't want to go that route. It's not in the best long-term interest of Dubuque County or the Health Department. That is my view. Trying to help.
Anything further, Ann?
I have utmost respect for you and great gratitude. You know that.
There'd be, I wouldn't have an issue with the thirty thousand for the strategic plan. But like Jay said, there hasn't been a dollar gone out yet because contracts aren't done. So, you know, I can put thirty thousand in your account, but can't do anything until.
That would be a little different with internal. We could, we don't need to contract with the, with the Board of Health to do funding there. So we could move on that quicker, I would say.
You have an issue with the strategic plan funding now through the ARP?
Yeah, third time, yes, I'm fine with that. You know, bring the polls, give me the dollar amount. I think we'd approve it. We did it, like I mentioned, for other strategic plan for banks.
Thirty thousand for the strategic plan, would you be in favor of that?
I think it needs to be much greater than thirty thousand dollars even for the strategic plan, because there'll need to be implementation dollars. So thirty thousand dollars I find insufficient. Now, there's, you can both do that clearly, if you're so inclined to do thirty thousand dollars today, but I think that's insufficient.
That was what Sandra had brought up, sure. I'm not second guessing the number she gave me. I don't know. Do you need more than thirty thousand?
Yeah, about one point two million more. I think that was our request.
Talking about the strategic plan.
They were, they were to go together, you know. We wanted the thirty thousand to do the strategic plan and the other funds to.
For the employees.
You know, yeah, so.
Talking the strategic plan.
I think the estimate was thirty thousand and Samantha did that, so I mean, she got the, that estimate.
I, I'm not going to vote for that honestly, because the truth is that a thirty thousand dollar strategic plan that you're not intending to implement in any way with any other additional funding is a waste of taxpayer money. So you don't just say strategic plan, here you go, you're done, goodbye. That, let's just borrow it from somebody, like some of our constituents have said. I've had people send me stuff from Minnesota. Here you go, strategic plan. You can pick out things in there that work. It, it goes together. It's to show the forward motion. It's to show support. We don't know this business because we're not in healthcare. But that's the thing. I mean, if you want to say that's what we're doing, but it's part of a grander scheme, of a grander plan.
I don't think there was any disagreement on the bigger part of this. With the employees, you know, with Health Department. The discussion was over where the funds come from. It's not that we're not supporting the Health Department. You're making it sound like we're not giving them any employees. We're going to give them the thirty thousand for the strategic plan and throw it out the window. No. We know we have to grow it. Where the funds come from for these extra employees is where the discussion's at. You obviously want to take it all out of ARP. I don't think that's the best place to come with it, and Jay obviously doesn't think that's the best place to come with it. But we're all in support of expanding the Health Department. Strategic plan will help them decide which way to go. You're not in favor of that, and that's fine. I'm not telling people what they have to be in favor of or not in favor of. No one wants to make any motions regarding it? I guess so. Let it sit until we get a new director and they can bring it back again. Thank you, Sandra.
Thank you, Sandra.
A two R nine fifty-five work session, discussion and tentative funding allocations for ARP. I should believe the ad left was the River Museum. Is that right, Ed?
The answer was yes for those in Zoom.
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
I said the answer was yes to Supervisor Potoff's question for those in Zoom who cannot hear Ed. Oracle Society is largely the last one on our current list to consider.
Of externals.
Correct.
The tourism enhancement. I think that's for one point one, right? Discussion on that.
Last left, we talked about, I think you said small, medium, large, maybe good, better, best, a better way to describe it. I think those were the three proposals. I don't know if we have those. That might be, it seemed that there was, there was interest amongst the, the board to provide some funding, and that's probably the levels we need to discuss. Okay, you're pulling it up.
Other one with three different options. I don't know if this was their second presentation to us or third. There we go. That was what my memory was.
Discussion regarding that.
So a great project.
Would be comfortable at the eight hundred thousand to up to the full award. Certainly, if my colleagues would want to start a more conservative amount, I would support that as well. So I wouldn't be voting against the, the good option, but if it's good, better, best, I would looking at, and it's really the dollar amounts with education exhibits that difference that kind of sways me off the six hundred thousand, moves it towards the eight hundred thousand. I think that's a very good use of funds. And also has modest marketing comparatively to the one point one.
Yeah. What do you have on that?
Where are you?
Eight hundred thousand, I would be. Eight hundred thousand, I would be agreeable with. Definitely is a good proposal, I mean, it brings in a lot of people, it's it for our city, our county. I think it's a good investment. You think it needs to be more, I could be swayed, plus I could be swayed, but I'd be, I'd be at the eight hundred.
You're eight hundred, where are you, Jay?
I'm comfortable with eight hundred.
Eight hundred thousand dollars.
Representatives from the Mississippi River, if they wanted to make a comment, Chair, it's up to you.
You can use a
Kurt Strand, President, CEO, Dubuque County Historical Society. The about five hundred thousand of this is infrastructure, so it is the one-time spend. And then the education programs are very important as we're going forward, so as you'd mentioned on the proposals. Of course, I'm leaning left on the chart up here. But the reach for us to draw more people in and the timeframe are really the big differences between eight hundred thousand and one point one million, I assure you, we will do great things with the dollar allocation that you decide for us. And happy to answer any questions if you'd like any details as to what types of infrastructure would be worked on and improved, or the types of educational programs that we've been talking about. And then the traveling exhibit is, when we proposed this, we hadn't signed the contract with them, but if we wouldn't have signed the contract, we would have lost the traveling exhibit. It's about three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, so we budgeted more dollars internally for this blockbuster exhibit. And the hundred and twenty-five thousand in that component just adds to allowing us to do a great blockbuster next year.
Thank you, no, I look forward to your proposal, I would have to say is the, the most organized and well-presented. And, you know, I know your organization does good work, so it really helps us understand you know, where the funds are going, and then giving the board options helps tremendously, so.
Thank you.
Well done to you and your staff.
Thanks, appreciate that.
Thank you.
I think it fits very much in the, one of the things that President Biden said we should use the money for in Congress when they approved this, which is for tourism. And as I've said many times, you are the bookend to the field of dreams, you're the reason, one of the reasons people stay. And you're my granddaughter's tied for one with the splash pad in Asbury for her favorite most thing to do every weekend if she can, so I'll make a motion to support the request at eight hundred thousand dollars.
I will second that.
Have a motion in the second to approve eight hundred thousand ARP funds for the Dubuque Historical Society for the tourism. Favor signified by aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. There he is.
Pardon me?
We'll have a resolution prepared for you for next week's meeting.
You have a discussion and tentative funding allocations for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three purchase service applications.
Chair Potoff?
Yes, sir.
Two things, can I request a five-minute or ten-minute recess, five-minute recess?
I'll make a motion to recess for five minutes.
About if we recess, will we table this?
I was, I was gonna, I was gonna suggest that we
On the clock where Delaware County Supervisors.
Correct, that was my suggestion was to
Motion to recess until eleven AM.
Pardon?
Motion to recess until eleven?
I will second that.
Have a motion in the second, recess till eleven, all in favor, signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye. We're in recess until eleven?
Hey Kevin, this is Anthony, can you hear me at all?
Anthony, it's Ann in the boardroom, we hear you fine, Kevin is away from his desk.
Yes, Anthony, can you test your audio one more time?
Can you hear me, Kevin?
Yep, we got you loud and clear.
Oh, great. Oh, there, there we are. Oh, good.
Eleven o'clock, we'll call the Board of Supervisors back into session, we'll be moving to our eleven o'clock work session with the Dubuque, or Delaware County Supervisors. Hi Shirley.
We'll call our work session to order also regarding sharing agreements for county engineer, assistant to the engineer and land survey with Dubuque County.
Are you guys able to hear Shirley okay?
Just a little garbled, I believe they were calling their work session into order as well.
No, we had the discussion on it regarding this Shirley, referenced the twenty eighty. We just wanted to make sure everybody was on the same page with that for the county engineer's position.
Yeah, so, but this, we had a little bit of discussion between Shirley and Harley, and when Dawn Turner Moon was still around. And the discussion was had, well, you can speak to it, I guess, but.
We, we had good years, Sharon, Anthony, bless your heart, Anthony. Good working relationship, and wish you well in your next ventures, and.
Yeah, but I think the, the, the overriding opinion on both sides, at least from Harley and Shirley's discussion was to go ahead and move several ways right now with two different engineers, both counties.
That was my thought process, and.
Yes, yes.
In agreement.
Jay, did you have any questions?
Yeah, my one question was related to the, the other, the other positions that we also share, what were the status of those and any feelings or thoughts related to the future of those positions? I, I've been very comfortable with the partnership, I will state that, and very pleased that we've had mutual success together. But that'd be a question I would have for the Delaware County Board.
Well, I, this is Jeff, I certainly would like to continue as we are, I think it's been successful for both counties. And I wouldn't see any reason to change it on my part. Same for me, this is Pete.
Not totally in agreement with that.
Okay, yeah, we were, I am definitely in favor of continuing the twenty eighty E with the other positions. I understand the county engineer's position would be pretty close to impossible to fill because I don't think we could find another Anthony that could run two counties.
I don't think so. So I have one question that I've been thinking about. Since Anthony was engineer for both counties, it was easy for him to share information back and forth between Craig and Wyatt. What do we do now if we each have a separate engineer, who actually will those two gentlemen answer to so everything stays on the same page? Does that make sense? Yeah.
So I would think, this is Supervisor McDonough, but we do have a new county engineer, Russell Weber. And I would think he would be the person that, you know, we would, he would have daily contact with those individuals that we share. It was reported in our news that we have a twenty-eight E agreement that we share Russell Weber's services. We do not have a twenty-eight E agreement with regard to Russell, correct?
Oh, no, right.
No, we do not.
No, we do not.
So he, as our county engineer, he, I would think would be the spokesperson, would be your contact for the employees that we do share, he would be that person, don't you think?
I'm, I'm trying to picture how, is he going to contact this board? So we know what's going on, or is Craig going to be the spokesperson? Because somebody has to relay information as Anthony has done now with both boards. Somebody has to relay information to our board on the progress and what's going on.
Mind if I speak?
Yes, absolutely, Anthony.
This is Anthony, so I guess it'd be my opinion that your, your future county engineer, whoever you hire will be the person that relays everything for Delaware County.
Okay.
So as far as So, as far as, uh, relaying how things are going with Craig with the county.
Yep.
That your county engineer should report that back to you.
Okay.
And also, uh, whatever projects are going on, on Delaware County side that's making use of Wyatt as a county employee. Your county engineer should be conveying that as well.
Okay, I, I just want to clarify it so I knew how it was gonna work.
And Russell Weber on the county side should be conveying the same information back to the county board.
Okay. Thank you for the question.
Do you have any further comments or questions, Jeff Shirley?
No, I, I just think it's been very successful and I would adventure more counties will try and get into this as it has been, as successful it has been for our two counties.
And I would agree, it has been very successful and I'm thinking that the, uh, surveyor position and any other ones that we can come up with are gonna be cost savings for both counties and if we can keep it working, I'd be more than happy to continue working with Delaware County, it's been terrific through this whole thing.
Thank you and great.
Yeah, thank you.
Sounds good.
Hey. So I have a procedural question, I don't know if anyone knows off the top of their head, I was kind of, I would having a side question, so is there three separate documents, three separate 2080 documents that, uh, talk about one, the county engineer? And then two, uh, basically Wyatt and then three Craig's positions? Is that, is there three documents and then how do we terminate one and just keep the others going, I'm just kind of thinking? Anyone know the answer to that question? Yeah, all three are separate and they're, they are separate recorded documents. Okay, good. Neither of them link to each other, um, so that if one falls out, it doesn't affect the others. Oh, good work, um, and so then my question would be, is, is there a termination clause or anything we need to do just in writing to kind of terminate the, uh, county engineer Anthony Barchette 2080? There was a, this is, uh, Auditor Dragato, there was a clause allowing either county to terminate within a certain amount of time period. However, the subject of the 2080 will cease to be an employee of both, uh, counties on or around July 15th, which would thereby end the 2080 right then and there. There is not actually a mechanism for he resigns and the 2080 is no longer for us, given that it is written about him and referencing him and not the county engineer position, but actually Anthony Barchette. The minute he's no longer an employee of either county, that 2080 is dead. Does, uh, do the folks from Delaware, uh, agree with that?
Yes, yes.
Yeah. I agree with the context, I'd still like a one document just stating that, that we're that the 2080 is no longer in existence as of a certain date. We can put a communication together that the board can receive and file that, that would, that would be awesome, thank you.
Yep, that'd be fine. Okay, I don't believe there's anything else, is there?
No, I, no, 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 I think.
Thank you very much Shirley and Jeff.
And maybe the last thing I would, would recommend, I'm sure. Here too, guys.
Yeah, Pete, I see, not really, but yeah.
We hear you Pete? Um, maybe the, I'm sure they would have done it on own, but I would feel bad if we didn't say it, but I would strongly encourage your, your new Delaware County engineer and, uh, certainly, uh, our new county engineer along with, uh, Wyatt and Craig get together and probably have, uh, uh, you know, introductions and certainly talk it out related to how that communication is gonna go so that we can continue on a successful path.
Yeah, sounds like a great idea Jay.
Yep. Very much.
Thank you very much.
Have a nice day.
You too.